...maximum of three minutes in case there's a lot of people that do want to speak. And I'll be kind to you and I'll be gabbling you if you get up to three minutes. So, thank you very much. I also want to make you know or realize that we are being recorded. There's a recorder right over here and Steve, you have yours set up. Okay, there's another recorder right over here. So, just so you know that we are recorded and we will show up on YouTube, Facebook, you knows what, you know what, we'll be out there. So, I think that's good for all of you to know. And with that, I just want to introduce the, our council members. Brooke Anderson, counselor. Kevin, Counselor Kevin Fittin hasn't shown up yet, but I'm sure, have you heard from him?
Yes, he has a grad school event, he cannot get out of.
Okay. And Counselor Rachel Beldow and former mayor and sponsor Steve Abramson. And I'm Mayor Owen Kringsdott. Over here, we have Linda Keith as staff and Terry Jokki Martin over there in the corner. We kind of threw them a curveball by having the meeting at the Civic Center. And I really appreciate, appreciate Linda, the extra hassle that it took to get the meeting down here. And if we do this again, we'll have plenty of warning and help carry things down for you. So, with that, I will sit down, we'll call the meeting to order. Once the auditors begin their presentation, the council is going to move over here to the front rows so that we can be front and center to watch the presentation and the report that's given as well. Thank you very much. So, I forgot the gavel.
You want a spoon from the kitchen?
No. So, it is now five thirty-two and we'll call the meeting to order. Linda, would you do, we'll call.
Abrahamson.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Beldow.
Here.
Counselor Fittin is absent.
Here. Thank you very much. And so, the counselors all have the agenda for them. Are there any changes?
I did add two items on the agenda on a printed copy.
Okay. Number nine point six and nine point seven are highlighted in yellow. City accounting software and standing bare Marina final payment estimate have been added to the agenda for this evening. Is there a motion to accept the agendas? Go move. And any further discussion, any second support?
I'll support.
And any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mine was an aye. I would like to now introduce Devin Seigler, you know, I started saying Seigler, but it's Steven Seigler.
Yeah, Seigler, yeah.
And Greg Knutson, Knutson's an easy one for me to pronounce. And they're the auditors with Walker Drew, Henny, and I have been doing the audits for the City of Tower for how many years?
Walker Drew has been doing it for a long time. I've been eight, Greg's got thirty-plus years' experience and then probably six or something so far.
I'd say close to ten.
Suffice, suffice to say that we have some very experienced auditors giving us a presentation tonight. And with that, the council will move over to the front seats over here. We'll ask our questions from there. After the audit is over, I'd like the audience, the chamber here, to hold their questions until we're done and we'll give you an opportunity to ask questions as well. Thank you very much.
So, this is our audit report for the City of Tower. I'm going to first go through with kind of our responsibilities is what we do in an audit. This is a financial statement audit, so we're primarily in charge of making sure that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. This is our audit report. If I scroll down here, sorry it's hard to see, I made it as big as I could, but under auditor's responsibility here, there's a paragraph that says, "Our responsibility is to express opinions on these financial statements based on our audit. We conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and the standards applicable to the financial audits contained in governmental audit and the standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. Those standards require that we plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement." So, we are auditing these financial reports. That is what we are hired to do. Then, on the next page. Sure, sure. Everybody can hear me? Okay. This is our opinion paragraph. So, this is where basically where we give our opinion as to whether these financial statements are clear from material misstatement. And it states, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the City of Tower, Minnesota as December, as of December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, and the respective changes in financial position and where applicable, cash flows thereof for the year ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." This paragraph is an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that we can present on financial statements. That being said, it doesn't state that the health of the financial statements. It states that they are presented in accordance with GAAP. Then, I will go into the cash deficits. So, I know there's been a lot of talk about funding. And this is our inter-fund balances and activities note. As you can see, we have a receivable fund over here, which the general fund has booked or, yep.
Devin, when you go to that page, can you tell us?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I haven't written down here. Page thirty-seven in the found audit, of course. So, this note basically shows all the receivables and payables between types of funds. As you can see, there's significant balances. The first one is the TDA Special Revenue Fund, which that is showing a deficit cash balance between the TDA and the general fund. So, basically, the general fund has loaned for cash flow purposes, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand to the TDA Special Revenue Fund. The next biggest balance is the Historic Harbor Renovations Capital Projects, which is over half a million. Then, further down, there's the Airport Capital Projects and the North Second Street Capital Projects. These funds have run deficit cash fund balances for numerous years. Then, along the same balance or the same topic, this is our spreadsheet that we use to basically look at the fund balances in a snapshot. So, the highlighted green line is the fund balances in the city's financials that make up the general fund. So, the way the city has reported for the past, since I've been auditing here, is that the general fund, Fund One-O-Two, which is a ski trail fund, One-O-Seven, the Forest, One-O-Nine, hoodoo, Two-O-One, the ambulance, and then One-Ten and One-Eleven, which are the airport funds, all those are combined to make up the general fund that we report in these financial statements. So, one of our management points, which we have made for the past five years or so, is to move this ambulance fund into Special Revenue Funds. So, in our financial statements, it's reported separately, so it's not aggregated with the general fund. And we want to do that because further down here, here's, everything highlighted in orange is in a deficit fund balance, so basically overspent. So, most of these are capital projects funds and also this TDA Special Revenue Fund. So, the total fund balance as we reported in the general fund is one point one million. Of that one point one million, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand is the ambulance. However, that's on our report is part of the general fund. And the general fund has funded all of these deficit cash or capital projects funds. So, that's kind of where the whole cash flow problem arises. And I think to be transparent, reporting the ambulance fund in a separate Special Revenue Fund or Enterprise Fund would be a good way to increase transparency of a financial statement, as it's presented on our report. Do you have anything to add, Greg?
A lot of places are showing the Special Revenue Fund instead of the Enterprise Fund because the danger of doing with the Enterprise Fund is you get net pension liabilities and deferred inflows and outflows. In addition, I mean, it's good to have the depreciation on those ambulances, but to show those, with those other ones, it sort of causes the issue of the real operations. Therefore, a lot of cities are showing the ambulance fund as a separate Special Revenue
So, we're back to our inter-fund balances and activities note eight. So, basically, these are cash deficit balances. Next, we'll go to page sixty-eight.
Sure. The, so the total of the deficit cash balances is one point one four nine nine?
Yes.
Okay. And did you know, you said there was a number of years that some of these cash balances, these negative cash balances have built up. Can you give an estimate on how far back they go? For example?
Yes, I can. The North Second Water and Sewer Project occurred between two thousand and nine and two thousand and eleven. The Main Street Water and Sewer Project, I guess we cleared that out, that was two thousand and twelve and thirteen. The Charter School, which is the TDA, sorry, is two thousand and twelve. The Airport Operating Fund was nineteen ninety-seven through two thousand and thirteen. The Airport Capital Improvement Fund was ninety-seven through two thousand and thirteen. The Howard Berner Ski Trail, I'm not sure when it actually started, but I know the last deficit was two thousand and thirteen. And the Harbor, there is some debt from two thousand and thirteen to eighteen, but from two thousand and seven to two thousand and thirteen, the Harbor had a debt of two thousand nine hundred and one, two hundred, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars. So, most of these debts were prior to the last council and this staff. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it did. I just wanted a historic perspective on the balances.
Most of them have been decreasing since two thousand and thirteen. The only one that has increased is the Harbor Project.
And historically, to fund these balances, they've been just transfers from the general fund. And that's how they end up getting eliminated and that's why they stick around for so long because, I mean, you're not really transferring a whole lot of money from the general fund every year. It's just twenty thousand here, twenty thousand the next year. And when you have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit, it takes a while. So, then we'll go to page sixty-eight. These are our findings. The first one, well, both of them, we've had every year just because of the nature of the small cities. Segregation of duties and the criteria states, "The concentration of duties and responsibilities in a limited number of individuals is not desirable from an internal accounting control point of view." The gist of this finding is basically the city has limited staff, so you can't have proper internal accounting control unless you hire more staff, which for small cities around here, it doesn't make sense financially. However, I feel like maybe since it's in the report, I know me and Greg talked about this, since this finding's in the report every year, a lot of times it gets overlooked by saying, oh, we'll never get rid of it, so who cares? So, that's one thing that I would say to the council is maybe that's something that they'll want to look into is how to segregate duties and whether it's relooking or checking off on invoices or requesting bank statements every month or something along those lines. But I guess I wanted to make sure the importance of segregation of duties because that's interim controls to make sure that everything's running fine.
Now, I'd just like to add on that, I know certain cities will pick an area or two every year to follow up on, whether it's opening bank statements, sticking their nose into things, making sure they review certain things going on because essentially, it's the council and the mayor that are responsible for these. So, if sometimes you've heard this finding or part of what they're going to do, I've seen it just add a thing or two, and everything that you do helps mitigate this because it is your responsibility to segregate as much as possible. If you don't have the staff size, have the council, the mayor, or some other designated person, but essentially to go in and change something so that way at least you're being upfront with it instead of proactive, instead of reactive. Thank you.
That was actually the answer to the question I was going to ask, but are there specific solutions that other small cities of size of power has come up with that have agreed to work well to segregate the duties? Obviously, what you just said is a good answer, utilizing the city council, mayor, and perhaps a counselor, but are there other?
Yeah. Okay, because I think the more amount of people that you can have safer cash dispersment, the more amount of people that could do the bank deposit, do the bank rec, pick up the mail, sign off on checks. I mean, each one of those specific duties would segregate duties even further. So, you know, it would get caught along the process somewhere. So, I think just getting the council involved is the main thing or having, having multiple people do different duties in the process is the best way to handle it, I think.
Really noted.
And one simple way is to have one of the council members opening the checks upfront, have it unopened. That way, if somebody's doing something or writing a check they shouldn't, it would get caught before it could be altered or changed or somehow destroyed. So, that's one way. And the other way is when you're writing checks, you know, I know there's, is there three signatures or two of them on there?
All five.
Okay. And to make sure that you're actually reviewing the dispersment, not just rubber stamping it. And if something looks a little goofy, like you have a check to someplace that just doesn't make sense, to actually go through and follow through and make sure that you're reviewing it, that way the person processing knows, knows you just can't, it's not going to be rubber stamped, it's actually a legitimate dispersment. That catches it upfront. That's one of the, those two areas are the two biggest I can think of from the dispersment area.
All right, then, also on page sixty-eight is our second finding, lack of control over the financial reporting process. This finding basically just has to do with that our, the city's hired our firm to put together the financial statements and they rely on us to actually issue the reports and all the notes and the financial report itself. Next, we will go to page seventy. And this is the management letter. So, this letter basically is our communication to the city council stating just things that we think need to be in writing that are more important to have in writing to the council. And there are things that could be approved on or improved on or that we found during the audit. So, the first one, as I touched on earlier, as reported in prior years, there are several capital projects funds that continue to have deficit fund balances. The city must review these deficit fund balances and determine ways to eliminate them. I went back and I think we've had this finding since two thousand and ten and that's the earliest that I went back. So, for the past eight years, this finding has been included in our management letter. Number two, the water and sewer enterprise funds reported operating losses of fifteen thousand, seven oh nine and twenty-one thousand, five hundred expectably. Revenues were insufficient to cover operating expenses. Management should consider the need to increase rates in order to make the enterprise funds self-sufficient. This, I think this finding has been fairly typical also. Number three.
Could I ask you, are the amounts been relatively the same? Are they, do they fluctuate or are they sort of flat?
You probably would have to find out. I know, I know they weren't, they weren't like hundred thousand dollar losses, they were, I mean, around, roughly around this. I know when we looked at it, I think those amounts were really close to the depreciation being taken in those accounts.
Yeah, pretty much we balanced to zero. Tried to, when those accounts, so kills up the depreciation. And to cover that, we would have to raise our rates forty-one dollars and fifty cents per quarter per household.
Yeah. If you could repeat that with my.
We try to balance our water and sewer funds down to a zero and so we don't have excess or deficit, so usually it's the depreciation that pushes us over, which it is this year as well. And in order to cover that depreciation this year, we would have to raise water rates per household, per quarter by forty-one dollars and fifty cents. So, it's, I get what they're saying, but at a practical level, it's also, there's something to be thought of there.
So, then, number three, the city reports ambulance activity as part of the general fund. The general fund has financed numerous capital projects by uniform lending. Since ambulance department is aggregated with the general fund and on the financial statements, it has indirectly financed some of the capital projects funds deficits. We suggest the city report ambulance activity in a special revenue or enterprise fund in order to increase transparency of the ambulance department. That's what I touched on earlier also. Number four.
Could I ask a question now and soon? The, and I hope they can hear me behind, hear behind me. So, by, by moving the ambulance fund to its own special revenue or enterprise fund, does that, does that show both what the fund is currently booked at and what's actually in the account? In other words, the actual? Or how would that be reported?
It would be reported similar to the other special revenue funds. I could pull one up as an example. So, like the TDA Special Revenue Fund, it would be just shown as its own separate fund and you'd see all the revenues and expenditures in detail. Instead, it's lumped over here in the general fund. So, basically, right after a TDA Special Revenue Fund, we'd just have an ambulance Special Revenue Fund. And it'd provide detail of all the different revenues, all the different expenses, and it'd just be shown separately. And additionally, if, if the general fund or if you wanted the ambulance fund to support any of these deficit capital projects or wanted to use some ambulance revenue for these capital projects funds, you'd have to transfer it, you'd have to physically transfer it. So, you'd see in the separate ambulance column, the transfer out of the ambulance fund instead of it being lumped in the general fund as a transfer or a due-to, due-from, from the general fund because you don't, you don't have a clear showing in the financial statements of what specifically that one was coming from.
So, that adds transparency.
So, then, number four, one person vouchered for a card member services payment was not authorized by the council, however, it was approved for payment in the minutes. We suggest dispersment vouchers that have written authorization by the council.
Just one second. Just to put this in perspective, the staff processed one thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven vouchers last year, so missing one is an error rate of point oh oh eight percent.
Number five, credits for a retirees health insurance reimbursement account were different than the amount approved in the minutes. It appears the difference was a miscalculation. We suggest the city review this calculation in terms of the correct amount that should be credited to the retirees account. And Linda had figured out it was just incorrect calculation of either, it was between five months and six months. So, that's just something that you guys can look at and determine what that balance actually should be.
Has, has that been corrected or it needs to be corrected?
Go get on to the agenda, we'll have that.
Okay. All right, thank you, Linda.
Number six, the city paid contractor two thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars more than what was billed on invoice and on subsequent invoice, there was no credit for the additional amount paid, nor was there a reimbursement for overpayment. We suggest the city review invoices and request reimbursement or credit for the overpayment. Okay. Number seven, storefront loan recipients have not been paying the loans timely. Interest on these delinquent loans should be accruing, however, the city has not calculated or tracked additional interest. We suggest the city review these loan agreements and determine a course of action for delinquent loans. What, one thing that could be done similar to this is look, look at those every three months, the council could, and make sure that the payments are up to date and none of them are delinquent. Number eight, invoice was submitted for reimbursement for a TDA loan provided limited detail, which makes it questionable as a reimbursable expense for the grant related to the Tower Harbor project. Invoice was submitted to the I triple R V and reimbursed. However, there doesn't appear to be appropriate detailed documentation supporting the payment. We suggest the city review invoices submitted for the related loan and I triple R V grant to verify that all invoices were allowable costs.
Devin, could I ask, on that one, the invoice in question was forwarded to you?
Right.
With an explanation?
Well, that was the detail that we had, that we already had. So, you know, the invoice itself didn't provide detailed enough information for, for us to opine that without question that, that, the services that were provided. So, additional information probably would be required for, for the invoice, for, for me to be able to totally understand what the invoice was being reimbursed for or being asked to be paid for.
Okay. I think the answer that was forwarded was that it was the final payment from the architect for architectural engineering.
Sure.
So, it was for work completed. But if you need or Linda would like additional documentation on that, we can request that of the Tower Harbor Shores.
Sure. Well, and I mean, this is just to bring up to the council to say, hey, it's something to look at, make sure it's reimbursable and if it is, then it's all in.
Yeah, good point. No, a point well taken.
At this point, the invoice does not represent anything that the city would be able to authorize expenditure for. I did contact the I triple R V again and they were not in favor of this, of this payment. They didn't, this is not an approved expense on their side. And their suggestion was to contact the state auditor and ask their opinion on how to resolve this matter because simply swapping one invoice for another invoice does not look transparent. So, they would ask that the state auditor come up with a procedure for us to resolve this. And since now these monies were paid to, and now we let it official, this makes it very problematic.
Yeah, so I guess that would be something for the council to look into.
I think you would support the state auditor's opinion on what did you write, correct?
Yeah. Well, I mean, we looked at the invoice and then it raises question marks, but I mean, if proper detailed documentation was provided, then, then I think. But, I mean, if proper detailed documentation was provided, then, then I think, uh, it would be a legitimate allowable expense.
Uh, one, one other question. Did you sum up, um, uh, all of the invoices that were submitted?
Yes.
There, there was, well, the, for the Tida loan, your top one? Yes.
It was the I triple R B grant that became a, a Tida loan?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, do you, do you recall what the total amount, uh, submitted was?
One hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay. So, it was, uh, several thou, it was like six thousand dollars more than the one twenty-five?
It was four thousand four, six hundred and ninety more than the one twenty-six.
Okay. And the invoice in question was for how much?
Twenty-nine thousand eighty dollars.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. And then, number nine. Uh, the city made a motion in two thousand and seventeen to allow Tower Vision twenty twenty-five LLC to make interest only payments on the loan, June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. From June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen to December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, no principal payments were made and no council action was in the minutes to extend the interest only term of the loan. In December of two thousand and eighteen, the council approved in the minutes to transfer the loan from Tower Vision twenty twenty-five LLC to Tower Harbor Shores LLC, but did not sign a new promissory note or other appropriate legal documentation until March of two thousand and nineteen. We suggest the city contact their attorney to resolve any conflicts related to this matter. Uh, the, so there is a new contract that was signed, but it was, um, in March. So, we, we suggest that it should have been, um, late December or early January. Uh, number ten. The current mayor was the development manager in charge of the Tower Harbor Shores project. Prior being sworn in, in as mayor, he stepped on him as the development team manager. We suggest the mayor, council and city attorney review related agreements pertaining, pertaining to the mayor and the Tower Harbor Shores project. Conclude whether or not a conflict exists and determine the course of action as to whether or not the mayor should abstain from voting on related projects.
Okay. Um, I would like to, uh, I'd like to comment. And the reason that I want to comment on this is that I, it's, it's come up a number of times and, um, and I think that a clarification, both to the public and, uh, the auditors and, and the city council is in order. Um, we, um, we had a discussion about this with the, um, uh, with the, with the auditors. And, uh, the suggested, um, addition, if you look at that, uh, second sentence, um, where it says that the development or former mayor, or the mayor, former.
Mayor.
Well, put it in safety. Yeah, um, it said prior, prior to being sworn in as mayor, he stepped down as a development manager. Uh, and added to that sentence should be, "And divested its family, uh, financial interests such that there are no current or future financial benefits to Crinkstead or, uh, any family members upon completion or dissolution of the Tower Harbor Shores project." Uh, "Any perceived conflict would, in any case, apply only to the three building, twenty unit townhome known as Tower Harbor Shores LLC." Uh, "And not to any other current or future project developments in the Tower Harbor area, north, south, east or west." And, um, I believe one of the, uh, one of the current managers of Tower Harbor Shores is present, so, uh, if he wants to comment, um, uh, if anyone has questions, they can, um, they can bring that question up. Tony?
Um, you said here in October of last year, five, six months ago, and you told us that this loan would be brought current by twelve thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen. Has that happened?
Uh, we're not talking about the loan now. We're talking, we're talking about conflict of interest. We're talking about point number ten.
I think the loan's part of a conflict of interest, but I'll, I'll remain waiting patiently for an answer. I'm wearing a hundred twenty-six thousand dollars in my status.
So, okay, I wanted to make that.
He asked for questions. Whoever commented that I was speaking out of place.
Well, and I.
I had one. He called on you. I'm getting to school. I remember how it works.
I, I can speak to that, cause I mean, that was our management point that we brought up in, in number nine, that, that we discussed. Um, and since our audit is through December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, it wasn't made, no, or the interest only term of the loan. The council had decided in, in two thousand and eighteen to allow interest only payments on that loan until June thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen. Then from June to December, there were no principal payments made. And I believe that the council decided in two thousand and nineteen to extend the interest only.
The council in two thousand and eighteen was the last one to take action on this and they pretty much said, we don't want to deal with this. We're sick and tired of hearing about it. It's the bane of our existence. It's been a problem ever since it was, it was brought to us. Nothing has been followed. Everything has been a problem. We were moving into doing processes that we wouldn't normally do and they just said, here you go, go on, with nothing being resolved or, or clarified.
Well, also, that's, I mean, number nine is basically our, our, um, statement towards that. Is that the interest or, or something needs to be discussed with council meeting, but yeah.
So, if we're part of that, do we do that in public input or do we do it now? Um, it will, it will have a chance to comment after the audit, um, presentation is over.
Uh, number eleven. Uh, a roster of the numerous boards, councils and commissions provided to the council contained errors. We suggest the city review this roster annually and properly document in the minutes any changes to boards, councils or commissions. Number twelve. Payroll reports had the following variances. Uh, line two of the nine forty-one forms for the first three quarters were corrected by adjusting the fourth quarter nine forty-one. W-two forms did not match quarterly reports. The W-two forms for four ambulance personnel that take para in lieu of wages were reported with a total variance of six hundred and ninety-four dollars. We suggest the city correct all misstatements and reconcile, review and approve payroll reports throughout the year to prevent similar misstatements.
And just for the record, we have eleven staff that have para and a sampling was done on Keith, Bjorg, O'Carlson, Bat and Kutila Carlson and Levens. And those seven were correct and there were four that were intermixed that were not correct. And this is entirely software problem.
And then, number thirteen. A cash transfer was made from the ambulance savings account to the ambulance checking account in anticipation for the purchase of an ambulance. However, the ambulance was not purchased in two thousand and eighteen. There was no indication of council approval to transfer the fund. We suggest the city review this transfer and follow slash review their procedures relating to transfers and financial reporting. Uh, number fourteen. Audit adjustments and requested reports were not presented to the auditor's timely. We suggest the city provide auditors with documents timely. Number fifteen. There appears to be a lack of financial reporting oversight. We suggest the council review and update procedures related to financial reporting in order to maintain proper controls. Such controls should include, but are not limited to reviewing dispersments, receipts, bank statements and financial reports on an ongoing basis.
And so, if you were here, we'd decide to, uh, they do the, do the dispersments at every meeting and then we also decide to make a revenue expenditures and bank statement summary at every, at the first meeting every month.
Okay. And sixteen. The city has numerous capital projects, grants and other capital expenditures that affect the overall cash flow of the city. At the end of two thousand and eighteen, cash that was not earmarked for certain capital expenditures was low. We suggest the city review their cash balances at every meeting and have a plan to manage their cash so the city does not have cash flow problems. And that, um, concluded what we wanted to touch on or go through.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, I appreciate, um, the, uh, city courts answer on number fifteen, uh, the financial reporting. We did talk about that at the last council meeting. It's something that, um, uh, finance, regular financial reporting with a dashboard kind of, um, presentation of the current state of the, of, of the city financially, uh, has not been done. And, uh, Linda and I, or, I'm sorry, clerk treasurer and I, uh, uh, and I think the council, uh, we, because we discussed it at the last meeting, uh, did agree that, uh, we should have a financial committee, uh, to help us, uh, develop, uh, the right kind of a dashboard, uh, presentation of, um, the financial situation and current assets, uh, of the, of the city. So, uh, and I believe Linda has, uh, the first, uh, of the treasurer's reports to present to us tonight, although I haven't seen them yet. Okay. Uh, are there, um, are there questions? From the audience? Yes. Um, and if you have a.
Love voice says great, but if it's on the mic, I could bring.
Lee Peterson, Greenwood Township. I'm wondering, do you know how much money is in the ambulance fund? Tonight?
Uh, tonight, we don't, uh, our audit was through, uh, December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. So, that's where our audit procedures stopped as far as cash. So, we know the cash balance has totally thirty-one, or December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen.
And that was?
Well. Um, through the end of last month, I mean, not tonight, but through the third quarter. We do not have that yet. But, um, that's.
As of twelve thirty-one, it was eight eighty-three, two seventy.
That's a fund balance. That's not cash. But, uh.
Good question. This is the, uh, sort of, uh, what I, I call it a dashboard. It's a quick glimpse at, uh, what our, what our, um, finances are in the city, what we have to work with, cash balances. We have, uh, deficits and we have, uh, surpluses. And, uh, we want to make that as presentable and clear to everybody as we can. So, it's one of the things that we will be addressing. So, good question. Thank you. Any other, uh? Michael?
I guess I was wondering.
You should introduce yourself to when you're.
Uh, Michael Wood. I'm one of the investors in the Tower Harbor Shores project. So, I live down near Giants Ridge, but I find myself coming up to Tower regularly some of all this stuff. So, I was wondering too about the deficits, what the impact of that is. So, if you, if you don't know the cash balance, for instance, of the ambulance fund, what do those deficits mean in terms of the operation of the city? And if you, do you have the money to do the stuff that needs to be done? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, so there's a difference between a fund balance deficit and a cash deficit. The fund balance, uh, deficits can include such things as receivables, money that hasn't come in yet, um, or payables, money that hasn't been spent yet. And so, so the fund balance, it, it gives an overall health of where that fund is at, but it doesn't necessarily give you the deficit in cash. So, I, I, I was going to, uh, get into my wifi and then I could, would be able to pull up, but actually I might be able to, uh, figure out the cash fund balance for you in a second.
Sure. So, I guess the basic question is those deficits are fairly large, but is that real or is that just an accounting kind of shuffle between funds? Is there a?
Well. It's, the, the deficits are large and it's basically your general fund has financed all these projects. And so, I, I showed that one slide. I'll, I'll, no, the plug. I'll, I'll pull back up this, um, due to, due from note that I showed earlier. That way the mood up.
Lot better than what used to be on there.
So, the, this was the note showing cash fund deficits. So, well, let's take the historic harbor renovation capital projects. That's half a million in deficit. That fund basically borrowed half a million dollars from the general fund, which the general fund is over half funded by the ambulance department. So, so they're borrowing that much money, that much cash from the ambulance department.
So, is that appropriate or is that a misuse of funds or is it a?
It was, so the state, the state allows you to report the ambulance fund in a general fund, like as part of your general fund. And that's why our management point said, well, to, to make sure that you're being transparent to report that in a special revenue fund and show it by itself. So then, if you ever did want to use cash from your ambulance fund, you'd have to transfer it. And you'd see a transfer going out of your ambulance revenue from, to, to the historic renovations capital projects fund. Did you want to speak on that at all?
Yeah. Uh, as far as the appropriateness, all those receivables and payables are due to and froms should be approved by the city council. And they're, they're set up as a temporary transfer versus a trans, permanent transfer or transfers in and out. That's where, um, a fund will make a, um, transfer to eliminate a deficit, but it's not meant to be paid back. These receivables, payables, the intent on those for cash flow purpose, temporary cash flow purposes, once either a grant comes in or a future levies or revenues or what have you, that those will be eliminated. But that, a point in time, December thirty-first and eighteen, these due to and froms still show and are in common.
So, are those transfers made like without formal council approval or are they, uh, since they're temporary?
Um, I believe they were made with council approval.
But that was before your time and then something else.
Yeah, and, and as a rule of thumb, you don't have deficit caches overall. If a certain fund has deficit cash, you set up a due to and from fund to eliminate, basically to highlight that, um, um, they're going to have to pay back fund X or fund Y, in this case, all of the, um, other than the sewer to the water, all of the one point one million that was shown on that is to the general fund, of which the, um, for cash flow purposes, a good, a good percentage of it is actually the ambulance fund.
So, we have a, uh, an ambulance on order and, um, it will need to be paid for sometime during first half two thousand and nineteen, I'm assuming. Uh, there may be some, um, and clerk treasurer or, or the ambulance director could probably answer the question, but, um, I, what, what is the, what is the date following delivery of an ambulance that it must be paid?
So, the, the, uh, chassis bill they're signing us, which was the, I, I don't have.
Use that voice of yours.
But, so the bill for the chassis, which is already now with the four-wheel drive is, is cut either, should have shown up today or will be here this week for that. The, the, uh, balance of what is owed on the ambulance, the bulk of it, is not paid till it is picked up. And at this time, because, because everybody was so far behind, starting with GMC, um,
Can everybody hear?
No.
We're not looking at final payment for the ambulance until probably August. The. So, so the bill is going to be split into three parts. The chassis, which is thirty-two thousand and change, the four-wheel drive, which is thirteen thousand and change plus shipping, uh, which I believe was two thousand and twenty-five hundred for the shipping. That will be the second bill. Uh, right now, that four-wheel drive is not going to be done until sometime in June. So, we wouldn't even see that bill till probably the end of June for that. And then, it takes them two months to build the ambulance, so we're looking at end of August for that ambulance to be built. So, the total bill is going to be roughly two fifty, so take out about fifty for the, for the chassis and the four-wheel drive, you're looking at about two hundred then is the balance. A hundred and forty-eight, nine? Is that, was that what it said in there? A hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred is ambulance subsidy money. That money is the money that the city of tower and the townships put in every year. So, that, that hundred and almost fifty is part of that. And then, the ambulance fund will pay the balance of that.
Is that, um, uh, the. Is that, the subsidy, is, is that in the ambulance fund?
It's in the ambulance fund, but it's a separate, when you look at the thing, it is a separate line item because they take that money, those are payments that the city makes to the ambulance and that all the townships make to the ambulance. And every year they take that amount, all those checks, and they add it to that ambulance subsidy. It's a separate line item that they credit that way. So that's how they keep track of that money every year.
Sorry, just, just, so, I'm just, I'm just trying to nail it down. So is the fund balance for the ambulance of eight hundred and some odd, eighty thousand dollars or so, is that before all of those loans? When those loans are paid back from the other funds, does that increase the ambulance fund, or is it not, is it not relevant?
It'll increase the cash and it won't increase the.
So is the fund balance and the cash balance very different?
Yes.
So the fund balance, the cash balance must be way lower than the fund balance. So we're not sure how big the cash balance is.
Well, I, I can get that for you, I just don't have a problem.
I mean, it could be less than the cost of the ambulance.
Well, the cash balance could.
Linda, do you have that number? I, I guess the question that's being asked here is, is, will the funding be there for that final payment when it comes due when the ambulance is delivered? Is that, is that kind of where we're going?
That would be one relevant question.
Who wants to take it?
Well, the funding is, I would say, I would say the funding, the funding is there, the money is in the fund. The city can, I, I guess I've said this a couple of times already, the city cannot keep spending money it doesn't have and borrowing it from the ambulance and not putting it back. The money's there. The city needs to make sure it's there. And, and not ordering the ambulance isn't how you're gonna do it. You're, you're not gonna pay that money back by not ordering the ambulance. It's not gonna, and well, it's ordered already anyway, it doesn't matter. But that money needs to be put back, and that's what they keep saying every year. You have to, you can't keep creating more debt, you have to start paying it down and, and not borrowing it constantly from the ambulance.
And I would agree with that. So. There's, there's, it's still the question, I think it's out there, and, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the ambulance fund needs to be replenished to pay for, ultimately pay for the complete ambulance. And how will that be done? In other words, the funding that has to pay back the ambulance fund is coming from negative fund balances? And am I getting that correct?
So, so what I put up on the screen here is the general fund. And the ambulance activity is included in your general fund. So you can see there's two hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars worth of cash in there. So what, and then further down. Your fund balance in your general fund is one point one million. So how do we get to there? It's basically this receivable from, due from other funds. So if all those funds would've paid the general fund back, their cash balance would shoot way up and they'd get rid of this due from other funds balance. So in essence, that, that fund balance itself, that it borrowed so much money from other funds, that the, the cash, it's basically the definition of a cash flow problem.
So some of that's gonna have to happen for your ambulance, right Steve?
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't, there are, I know like the tax, Linda, when does the city get its first tax? In July? So that, whatever that chunk of money is and whatever, whatever other revenue sources that the city has. I mean, it's not the first time that the.
Right, I was just gonna bring that up. The hundred and eighty six thousand of grant receivable. As soon as that comes in, I believe the I of Barbados State won't get to, have to dig into that for sure. Yes?
Where before that a whole bunch of townships paid into that ambulance fund?
Yes.
Okay, so shouldn't, I'm just guessing, I'm not an accountant. But shouldn't that be treated a little differently as far as sprinkling that money around?
It is.
You know, that, that should be for the ambulance.
Correct, and it, and it is, and I, I believe Steve said the hundred and forty eight thousand set aside.
Forty eight nine, I think it's.
On page thirty eight, this is the fund balance. Note that we have. So as you can see, restricted. So, so this is how, how we track the ambulance revenue that's paid for by the townships. Money comes in from the townships, we restrict the fund balance, but of course, like I said before, the fund balance isn't a cash balance. So not only do we restrict the, restrict the fund balance, so it's ambulance contributions of a hundred and twenty five nine ninety, that's what the townships contributed as of December thirty first, twenty eighteen. But then we also restrict the cash. So the city set, sets aside a savings account. And that money is deposited into the savings account. Which, that being said also, we have a management point on that.
You know, I'm starting to think that, I think I understand a little bit of that part, but now the taller part of the ambulance fund is gone and they're asking us to increase our contribution. I think that's the cover of the taller part that's gone.
No, that, that's not it. So you, you don't have the sheet in front of you, but they provided the CDs and savings. The ambulance subsidy fund, one forty eight four ninety is one of the savings accounts. So that money is dedicated for the purpose that, it, it has to be dedicated back because it's illegal to spend it on anything else.
So did you hear the answer that, that one hundred and four, that, that one hundred and forty eight thousand and change, Steve?
Yeah, one forty eight.
Is in a savings account. It's there, ready to pay for some portion of that ambulance.
And we're being asked to increase our contribution because apparently the taller part of the fund is spent somewhere else.
No, Tower's, Tower's money is included in that subsidy.
It's in the fund, but the cash isn't there. That's what I.
Okay, I think he's asking, Steve, how much of the tower subsidy is in that one?
All of it.
Okay, which is?
The, well, the total balance is a hundred and forty eight.
Okay.
That's, so they take that money every year, and there's a line item in the, in the rev, or in the expenditures. No, in the revenue, excuse me. It says tower, what does it say, tower?
Township subsidy, or tower tax portion.
Yeah, tower tax portion, and that is Towers.
It'd be great, Steve, if you'd stand up and use that booming voice of yours.
Yeah, okay, so that's, all the tower subsidy money and all of the township subsidy money is in a savings account where it's supposed to be. The rest of the, the rest of the accounting stuff is City of Towers' problem. And, and the, the increase in the subsidy has absolutely nothing to do with that. The city has borrowed itself money and does have to put it back. But the, the rigs have gone to a cost of, right now, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That subsidy was left way behind. The whole point of the subsidy is that all the townships and the city were putting that money aside to pay for those rigs, and it no longer does that. That's why it has to go up. Well, I'm sorry, but that's the way it is, whether you accept it or not is irrelevant.
The contribution to the ambulance fund on an annual basis through twenty eighteen, do you have that spreadsheet? Yeah, I think it was like twenty fifteen through twenty eighteen. Roughly the, the, the revenue from operating the ambulance service contributed a certain number of dollars, in the hundreds of thousands, or a hundred thousand plus.
Did the township contribute?
No, 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 no. The, the ambulance operations that contributed to the ambulance fund. That, that eight hundred and eighty three thousand, is that what it was?
Yes.
So the, the ambulance operation has, has built up a sizable fund, even though that funding has been used for other purposes, which is a problem that we've inherited, that we need to solve. And, and I pledge that this council is going to solve that this year. Steve, I, I think your question back here, can you come up and use the?
I'm Dina Swiken and I actually live in Tower. I'm on the ambulance service. The big thing that you're not getting is that everything costs a lot of money. You know, you're looking at about eight hundred and some thousand dollars. That goes to pay for, our pay on call. That goes to pay for ZOAs that we bought. That goes to pay for every single thing that we use to protect every one of you. The money that goes into the subsidy, I was on part of the service when they increased it, the five dollars a head years ago. It had been the same amount of money per person for twenty years. Nothing ever built up. They had to purchase two ambulances. When they did that, they went into debt with that portion of it. So they've been trying to get themselves out of debt by paying money back in. You know, it's like we, we keep wanting to throw that eight hundred thousand dollars in there. That eight hundred thousand dollars has nothing to do with the rigs, it really doesn't. It has to do with paying for day to day stuff. There's also, what is it Steve, a hundred and?
Hundred and forty is part of the building funds.
So when that building out there burnt down, a hundred and forty thousand dollars was brought in from that. That's sitting there waiting for us to get another building. Right now, we don't have a second building, we've got an ambulance sitting outside. It comes down to, you know, we keep throwing this out there, well, you have this, you have this. Just like every other fund. When I do my bills, I have money that goes to here, money that goes to there. And if I have to choose between paying twenty five dollars a head and having a service or not paying it, guess what I'm gonna pay? You know, and that has nothing to do with me making a mint being on a service. I'm the one that's up at two o'clock in the morning going out to help people. It's what I do, it's what I choose to do. But sitting here listening to you complain about it doesn't make it any better. Comes down to, you probably think nothing about going and spending twenty five dollars for a, a piece of steak. But yet you're complaining about putting that.
You're getting way off the track.
It's the same thing.
So I will, I will say this as far as, as far as the ambulance. This is not the first time that this has happened. Because that subsidy was so far behind, the last two ambulances, the ambulance fund had to cover with their money because there was not enough money. It's about a hundred thousand when the two thousand eleven went, was bought, and it was a hundred and fifty thousand almost when the two thousand thirteen. That the ambulance fund covered money that was earned and saved by the volunteers. Now, we have pay on call staff now, but up until April of last year, we did not. All of that money has been earned and saved by volunteers. So keep that in mind. And that money is, ultimately all goes back into the ambulance, into the very expensive equipment that it costs to do that job. And we're pocketing that money, that's why it's eight hundred thousand dollars. We save, we try and build that fund up as much as we can because we know we're gonna need to cover stuff down the road.
Well, we were, we were led to believe that the big deal about the transfers and this and that was gonna, we're gonna have Marty bar on here. That it was gonna be self paying basically, or generate a lot of income, and maybe it is for some. But that eight hundred and some thousand dollars, that's still for the ambulance, one way or the other.
Correct, I'm gonna move on to the next.
Ambulances generate that money. So you're asking us to pay in so you can borrow from that fund, Larry. The ships that are on the pound are. So we're, we're not lying.
Linda, maybe just, I think she's just gonna answer this question. My name's Steve Wilson. And what I still don't understand is when the ambulance is paid for, two hundred and thirty thousand or whatever it is, what is that gonna do to the overall Tower City budget in terms of cash on hand? Is it gonna put us in a real bind in terms of being known to operate? And that's for the auditors, or, or Linda. But do, well, auditors first.
So, so right now we're three months past our basically term that we were supposed to be auditing. December thirty first, twenty eighteen is basically who we can speak for. Because I, we don't, we don't audit January, we don't audit February in twenty nineteen, so, so as far as that, I, I can't speak to that.
Well, from, from where you're saying, December, what did it look like?
I would say the fund has a cash balance of a hundred and seventy nine thousand, and the shortfall that the subsidy account will have on the rig is about seventy nine thousand. So that should be a hundred thousand and some change in the ambulance in cash and the ambulance fund above and beyond after the rig is paid for.
Thank you.
I think that answers the question that everybody had.
And you're talking about the cash balance?
Cash.
In specifically the, the fund, fund dual.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, I, I anticipate after the rig is paid for, with the current amounts that we have, we would have a hundred thousand. I would expect that after the rig is paid for, August, September, somewhere in there, that after, the, the full subsidy account will be depleted by that, by that expenditure, and there would still be a hundred thousand left in the ambulance in cash. After the rig is fully paid for.
Okay. Yes, Marshall, can you come up?
Well, I can, I can speak for you. Of that a hundred thousand dollars that's remaining, does that separate out the hundred and thirty thousand insurance settlement? Because that, that should also be in that account.
Yes.
That, so that's separated, so there's an additional hundred and forty thousand on top of the hundred thousand?
Yes.
Was that a hundred dollars?
Yes, but the one forty is restricted for a building. The hundred and forty is restricted for a building. Cannot be touched for the purchase of an ambulance.
Or you have a hundred and forty eight?
No, that's a different one.
Okay, Marshall?
You had touched on this, I think, just a few minutes ago. The, you've mentioned that with the pay on call, not then an increase in the, in both the revenues and expenditures. But can you tell us, Devin or Greg, how things finished up in terms of total expenditures for the ambulance this year versus the total revenues? And I understand there's like fee for service, there are some subsidies that come in from the townships, I think also the county. Could you give us the kind of a breakdown of how that shook out?
I can. It, it's not very detailed, but I can tell you overall, yeah. So, sorry, it's kind of small, I can make it bigger. So here's your general fund. Here's the ambulance fund. Here are total revenues, here are total expenditures. It should be noted in the total expenditures, I believe the cot was in there as a payable. Pay on call was this year.
And ZO.
And ZO, that's a cot, right?
No, that was Striker, Striker was already, both of those are paid in this first.
Oh, well, okay, so you did buy both of them, so both of them are in.
I think you set up a payable for the stair chair and Lucas CPR assist device.
Yeah, I, I could get you more detail, but unfortunately that's what I have right now.
Can you read those figures, Steve?
So beginning fund balance was eight hundred and eighty seven thousand. Revenues were four hundred and fifty three thousand. And expenditures were four hundred and forty nine thousand. Revenues were four-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, and expenditures were four-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand.
So Devin, just so we're clear, because this is the question that's really being asked. We made a lot of money this year. I just spent it all on equipment, correct?
On equipment, uh...
Although we had those huge maintenance bills as well, but...
Right, yeah, I think maintenance did go up, uh, paid, paid-on-call, I think that was.
Sure, but beyond that paid-on-call, we, I spent all the profits, is basically, not all, but I spent them all.
And I, and I think that's where the city has gotten in trouble in the past, because you didn't, you weren't spending all your ambulance revenue. You were pocketing some of that, and that's where your general fund is growing, and you're using that excess funds to pay for all these harbor projects, for instance, or the other capital projects.
Right.
You borrow from Peter B. Paul.
Correct, yeah.
And Peter doesn't have to get paid back.
Well, I guess it would be noted. That's, that's why we have this management letter on the footstone for documentation, the number thirteen. So, so this transfer was, uh, a transfer from the savings to the checking of the ambulance. So, so as of twelve-thirty-one, that savings that had the subsidies with townships, and there wasn't in the savings. I wanted to make sure that was clear, because you guys are talking a lot about the ambulance.
Is that the hundred-and-forty-eight that you mentioned, Stan?
That's the, that's the subsidy, the one forty-eight mine.
Okay, that was in anticipation to, to pay for the ambulance, but that money, that physical money was moved from the savings to the checking.
So it's now sitting in general?
Yeah, now it's back.
Oh, yeah, that, I don't control that stuff, so.
No, we, we anticipated with years past, we always had to have a large payment right upon ordering. This is a new company, new bid style, new build style, so it's, it's a little different than what we thought.
So, um, we got one more question back. Uh, you wanna do that first? Right, well, I think what we heard earlier is it's recommended that we pull the ambulance data and put it over in a separate column, separate from the general fund. What does the city council need to do as an action item to make that happen effective January first of this year? Specifically?
Make a motion and approve it?
It's, it's really easy.
It, it'd be really easy for us, because it's, I mean, on, on bank, on the, on the city's books, it's already a separate fund. Yeah, I mean, I could pull up the trial balance right now and give you revenues and every, revenues and expenditures and everything in that fund. So it'll just be presented.
Does the city council need specifically to approve that new segregation of costs?
Yes.
And out of the general fund? And when can we see that on an upcoming agenda?
The next agenda? On the next agenda, if the council wishes, there's no, there's no argument here. It really doesn't make a difference for our data processing.
Well, and, and I, I pulled up all, all the audit reports in twenty-ten, and I think Gatsby fifty-four was the, the Gatsby in twenty thirteen or fourteen, and we have this management point on your report, that this ambulance fund should be reported separately. Because, I mean, it, it, it's a huge revenue generator for the city. And to be just lumping it into the general fund, it, it feels like it's not being transparent, and it should be reported as a, as a separate fund.
So is that something that we can do, um, several months into the year?
Yes.
Or would we, oh, sorry?
You can do it retroact.
But I just asked if that's something we can do several months into the year, since we're in a new year for accounting purposes and...
Because we already said you're gonna do it retroact.
Okay, good.
Oh, boy. Uh, Joan, you haven't spoken yet.
Okay. Joan Brunton, uh, resident of Tower. I just want to say that I feel like there should be some respect, though. When you have a question and want to understand what's going on, it should be answered respectfully. And that should go for all the townships. Um, there should be an accounting, an easy, visible accounting for all the townships to see what they're putting their money in for.
And that would be the dashboards that I was talking about. That, uh, there's other terms for it, but it's, it's the, um, it's a glimpse at any given time where the city stands on various funds and our financial situation. Marshall?
This is the last question I'm gonna ask. Uh, over the last four years, there's been about, I think, seven sales of city-owned land. And I know there's a number of additional sales or parcels which are now up for sale, which the previous council threw in their last meeting. And I'm just wondering if you can tell us, where do the revenues from that go? Do they just go into the general fund?
Sure, uh, some of the land on my spreadsheet here.
Did, did everybody hear the questions?
Uh, in a general fund, there's five-eighty-eight, six-forty-four. I'm, I'm not, I can't say that all of it's, uh, sale of land, but I'd say the majority of it is. I think there was either two or three parcels in eighteen that were sold. But that, that would be the revenue going into that general fund. I know, did, I think the forest fund in the past has had some land sales also. So on, on our financial reports or our audit report, they would all be recorded in the general fund.
And a couple of them earmarked in Harbor. And a couple of them could be sold are earmarked towards Harbor debt. So once they are actually sold, they'll be credited to the Harbor deposit.
Okay, Marshall said that was his last question. Um, are we, um, are we good?
Yes.
Is this the public input period?
Uh, no, okay.
Okay, so my last catch-all question is, uh, we said there was two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand in the town cash fund balance, right? Two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand?
In the general fund?
Cash. And then we said that, uh, I think, Steve, you said we had a hundred-and-forty-eight thousand in the ambulance savings account. That can't be spent on other stuff, because it's from a... So is that hundred-and-forty-eight part of that two-hundred-and-thirty-eight? So the overall city cash balance is more like ninety thousand, right? If you take that one forty-eight out, that can't be spent on various...
I would, no, not overall city cash, it would be overall general fund.
Right.
Uh, here, I can...
Uh, so... So the question was, is the one forty-eight that's being set aside for the township subsidy cash, is that part of this number? And it is.
So, the, one, one last question. What, um, what do we have to do, uh, to get these, uh, all these fund balances back in, um, um, back in order so that, that there aren't the deficit, uh, uh, we have the, uh, uh, that, that spreadsheet's gone now, but, um, uh, so the, the deficit funds really have to pay back, uh, the ambulance fund?
Correct.
The, the general fund, yeah.
The general fund, yeah. Linda, maybe the question to go to, um, how long will it take? How, how long will it take to get the negative, because I understood that the negative fund balances have been out there for quite some time.
Yeah, we were left, I was left, I was left quite a bit of debt. I was left nine-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars of a debt when I took over a clerk. It is now down a hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, and that's over five years of careful management. I don't know how, I mean, it's gonna take you another five years at that rate to do that much more. The only other way you could do it now is to bond for it. And I don't know how long it'll take.
And, and that is the million-dollar question, because, um, yeah, the general fund, it total has, um, a due from of, um, over a million dollars, and it's coming from a lot of those, um, capital projects fund. So the question gets back to, to that fund. How is that deficit gonna be eliminated in those funds? Because that's obviously project cost that is higher than whatever other revenues or grants is put in there. I don't know the answer to that question, but that's really the, um, the, um, the basis of the problem is cash flow-wise, you have these other funds that have spent in a deficit, and you can't, somebody's gotta pay for them. And cash flow of the general fund is flowed into those funds basically temporarily more. How are those funds going to pay that back? That's, that's basically the crutch of the question and the problem right there.
Uh, yeah, the suggestion was we bond for that, but if we bond for it, isn't that just more debt we're taking out? Isn't that like a second mortgage that also has to be paid back?
Yeah, you have to pay it back. We need to pay it back.
Right, I just would, you have to pay that back, and it might even decrease the deficit depending on, um, the terms of the bond. And normally, bonding is for a specific project. You can just, I mean, I don't know, it's hard to bond after that. Normally, you bond to fund the project, so I don't know if that's even legal or even appropriate way of doing it. It's just a matter of how, where do you get the money from to do that?
Good, um, good, well, good question and good, and good answer. Uh, I'd asked the same question at one point, and, and, uh, and there were two ways of doing it. One is raising the levy, which doesn't help for, um, several years anyway, and the other one's bonding, and that's something that I don't want to do. Uh, we need to look at, as a council, we need to look at what the other options are, um, what sort of economic development, uh, what, what we can do, uh, to get the finances of the city, which, um, uh, maybe I should ask you, I may ask the, uh, the CTA's or the auditors, um, the, uh, how, how would you, how would you define the financial health of the city now, and do we have some serious work to do?
I would say there's definitely a cash flow problem. And, and before you start any further projects to fund the ones that you already started, that, that haven't been funded.
And if you were going to borrow from funds, have a payment plan and a way to either pay them back, or how are these projects being funded? Because it's, the trouble is, a lot of them, you get, um, just for example, a million-dollar project, you only have five-hundred-thousand grants. Right there, you're five-hundred-thousand behind the eight ball, where you're in the deficit, and that's been allowed to go on to tune up over a million dollars in the past. And a lot of it has to do, you can see the majority had to do with these capital projects funds. There for Capital Project, Historic Harbor, the North Second Street Capital Projects, and, um, and there's a little bit also in the TITA Special Revenue Fund. That's a majority of the one million, and that's the amount that's saving at twelve-three-one-eighteen, um, as a, a amount to deal back from general.
I think we need to wrap it up now. Very good questions, and, uh, we gave you some tough questions to answer. Um, also, Linda and Steve answered some tough questions, um, but I think that, uh, it's, it's clear that the, the city council, um, most of us are here, and, uh, we understand that, uh, there are some, um, challenges that we have to meet, uh, in the coming year, and we need to be creative and thoughtful and, uh, and professional about how we do it. So, uh, it could be painful, um, but what we have to do, we have to do, and, uh, we're committed to, um, uh, I don't know if I can see some nods here from the council, but, uh, yes, it's, uh, these are things that we have to do. I want to thank you very much for coming out here. Uh, good report, and, um, we will go on with our agenda now. I, I, did, did you have any final comments that you wanted to make? No? No, okay, okay, all right. I didn't think so. Um, all right, so we're gonna move back, uh...
I just have one general one.
Okay.
I think it was wise for the city to have a meeting just to get stuff. Oh, because a lot of times, the meeting was talked about, nobody asked any questions, so a lot of them certainly, as far as what happened, what happened during the audit. So I think it was a wise choice to have a forum or a meeting like this, and I thank everybody.
Well, I started talking out about civic engagement, and that's what we have here. There's, uh, there's, there's a, a whole room full of concerned people here that are going to keep us, uh, keep our nose to the grindstone and make sure that we do what we have to do. Uh, we've been elected to take care of these issues, and, uh, and that's what we're gonna do. And I'm confident that we'll be able to work with city staff and, um, and, uh, and meet the challenge, but it may be painful. Um, Dale, one last question or comment?
Yeah, I just, I live in Greeley, so I'm not, but I do work here in town. I just have a question. Um, with the new building for Lampa, is, does any of that money come out of the general fund or out of the city, or is that all being funded by the ITRB?
Uh, the question was, is the, uh, new Lampa building completely funded by ITRB, or is the city?
Is the city funding any of that?
So...
I mean, I just, I'd like to know.
Sorry, I took that, that down, but the, the TITA Special Revenue Fund is in a, a fund balance deficit of a hundred-and-thirty-nine, five-thirty-four, and...
A large share of that already existed from the Sharpe School remodel, huh?
Yeah, yeah, so, so that's the trouble with looking at it as a fund as a whole, because there are a couple different projects.
Well, Linda, as far as you're aware, uh, that's all been covered by the ITRB.
The, the building of a building itself and the, and the, uh, dirtwork and site work, yes. After the building is built? After the building is built, half of the building will be the city's responsibility to take care, because you will only be paying rent for half.
I just know that there would be devastating without the cities.
No.
Being harmed of building, building.
As, as for the building itself and the groundwork, that is all being funded by either the grant or the loan from the ITRB.
The other thing is, it seems to me, listening to all this, there's a lot of trying to deflect, it's like someone with five credit cards trying to pay one credit card to the other one. Not really, it doesn't sound to me like the ambulance fund is the problem, it's, it's viral. It sounds to me like the current city council and the current staff have all been handed a lot of debt, and they're trying to deal with it. So, uh, I don't think, all of, you know, trying to point blame at each other is really doing any good.
Okay, um, looks like Mark replenished the cookies over there. Uh, the council is gonna move over back to the council table, and, uh, Steve, you got a minute to grab some coffee or a cookie if you'd like, um, and, uh...